All right. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. This is the Monday, April 9th, regular session of the Edina School Board. I do welcome our crowd here. We've got a nice group of people. And with that, I'm going to have John quickly go through the agenda for us.
Okay. For tonight, we have, under the consent agenda, we have some personnel recommendations. It's that time of year when we start making those recommendations. The school board meeting dates for the 18, 19 school years also on the consent item. For reports and discussions, we have our third installment of a series on personalized learning from the elementary perspective. For action tonight, we have 2018-19 budget, the preliminary approval of the budget. The budget, of course, is approved in June. Some other things related to construction, Creek Valley lighting replacement. We have instructional size guidelines discussion and action to approve those, some policies to approve, and then information related to enrollment staff recognition. Do we have some students here? Obviously, we have students. That's a dumb question. You guys are from where? Edina, I know that. What class? And what class?
Government.
Government. Oh, you were talking the teacher. Okay, government. All right, well, welcome. Can we give our students a round of applause for being here? All right. Great place to watch government unfold. So, that's it.
Okay. And now that we've gone over the agenda, I think we actually have a couple of changes to it that we need to make by motion. I think, Sarah, have you got a couple of motions?
Yeah, if I could add a couple of things. I believe that we have a consent item that we need to add under, it's another one of our non-renewal recommendations. I could add that, Mr. Chair. I also have a clarification. One of the consent items may be actually an action item, and that would be for our robotics team trip. It is indicated on my paper that it's an action.
Okay.
Would you prefer that we put it there?
That would be great. That would be six F.
So if I could add that as six F, approving our Edina First Robotics Team, which has found out that they're going to the World Championships, which is very exciting. We also have an additional action item, which would be six G. And that is our Edina Community Center re-roofing bid that came in. And then lastly, I understand, Amir, that I believe we're going to table policy 903 this evening. So if we could table that for now.
Okay.
And that's all the additions and changes for this month.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Any questions? So all those approving the motion to add a consent item for non-renewal, approval of robotics under action, approval of re-roofing under action, and tabling 903, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the March 15th work session, the March 19th regular meeting, and the April 2nd work session? Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the March 15th work session, the March 19th regular meeting, and the April 2nd work session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We don't have any listed staff recognition. We do have a staff recognition that came in via email for Principal Chris Holden from the elementary school. We received an email from Teacher Roland Talan commending Superintendent, I just gave him a promotion, Principal Holden for his work at Normandale. And with that covered, we go on to hearing from members of the audience. Again, every week, we do, every month, we have hearings from members of the audience. I want to remind people that we do have a 6:30 session. This month, we did not have anyone sign up for the 6:30 session. So for the 7 o'clock, we've got three people signed up, and actually, four people signed up. And I would request that people keep their comments to three minutes or less. Any comments about individuals within our school district? And with those general guidelines, I'm going to start to call people. The first person would be Dietrich Nissen. Not here. All right, next would be Rob Parish. Welcome.
So, first of all, is the audio and visual system working this time?
We hope so.
Okay, super. My name's Rob Parish. I have four kids in the Edina School District, one in high school, two at Southview, and one at Highlands. I originally requested the opportunity to speak to you today because I sent three emails to the superintendent and to all of you requesting a response, and no response was forthcoming from any of you. I figured all of the superintendent and all of you would be here tonight, so this would be a perfect opportunity to pose my question and make my suggestion on the record. I will add that John and I did, the superintendent and I, did speak today on this topic. So I'm just reiterating this for all of you. Want to give you a little bit of background. In early February, I'm not too close to the mic. In early February, Highlands School took the third and fourth grade classes to see a play about Jackie Robinson. At that play, they learned the N-word. They learned it while they attended the play. The N-word is a culturally charged term that is no longer tolerated in our society. I expressed outrage to the school board, to the school, that they would expose the children to the N-word at such a young age because they're simply not mature enough to fully understand the cultural significance of this term. I received a response from the school dismissing my concerns, and I heard nothing from any of you. More recently, I received two emails informing me that the second-grade children are now freely using the N-word about school. The teacher, excuse me, this word that the school taught them. This email also informed us that the children and their parents are violating federal hate crime statutes and face consequences under federal statute for the use of this word. That is absurd. I'll read to you the question and suggestion I sent to all of you and ask for a response from the superintendent. My question was, is it the policy of the Edina School District to threaten children and their parents with consequences under federal law for violation caused by actions taken specifically by the school? When I spoke to the superintendent, it appears that the answer to that question is yes. That does conform with school district policy to threaten elementary school children and their parents. Secondly, I suggested that there be a follow-on message to the two previous messages sent out. And that message would explain to all people in the Highlands School, that the N-word was taught as part of the curriculum lest the public believe that six, seven, eight, nine-year-old bigots are wrong. For the school board's benefit, and based on my conversation with John, it appears that the district has no issue with the threats made by the school, and in addition, sees no causation between teaching the children the N-word and its eventual use. I find that also to be absurd.
Thank you. Next was, next will be Elizabeth Pellet. Welcome.
Thanks. I'm here to talk about budget. And what is at the bottom of our budget proposal is a study on fifth-grade music and possibilities of moving that to community ed or having it rescheduled or not having it at all. And I'm here because that would be counter to our all-for-all message. Having it at community ed means that kids whose parents are free-reduced lunch or lower income would not be able to get there most likely every week, even if they got money from the ed fund or from the other, I was going to say the other fund, sorry.
Even Go.
Even Go, thank you. It may still be hard for them to get there and have the lessons every week. And I wanted to read to you about musicians and what happens to the brain, because we just know certain terms about brain science. So there is a neuromusological science, and musicians have superior working memory, auditory skills, and cognitive flexibility. Their brains are very more symmetrical, they respond more symmetrically than listening to music. Their brains are responsible for motor control, auditory processing, spatial coordinations, and they have much larger brains. What also is interesting is, if you look at the science behind it, this program should not be cut or even studied, in my opinion, because of the effects of the brain. What really should be happening, it should be expanded. The brain for children, best time to start is prior to age seven. Fifth grade is after age seven. If you look at your competition for schools, which I did look at, it was Blake and Minnetoka, they start, Blake starts at pre-K. Minnetoka, they expanded to fourth grade, so they're fourth and fifth grade. So when music is taught to a child, it improves their language development, there's a small increase in IQs, they improve test scores, they increase brain connectivity, and increase spatial intelligence. Counterintuitively, music can help students excel in science also. Gitzys just expanded a program that started in second grade in East St. Paul, and they took 20 kids in impoverished neighborhood and asked them if they wanted to learn how to play the violin. And 20 kids stepped up and said they wanted to play. They do fall and spring map testing, and they looked at the study of these 20 kids. Before the study even came out, the teachers were amazed at how much their test scores improved. So they've expanded it now, all 20 kids came back for third grade, and now they expanded it again for seventh graders, so second and third graders, and they're going to continue on with that. And they also expanded their east side performances for the Gitzys. They have the harmonica and symphony this year. And what they're trying to do is go out to schools that have free-reduced lunch and try to expand this program. Our budget, and I look at the things that we're paying for, we spent $4,200 on cultural responsive training, which is important, but we already sent people to that, and they probably could train other teachers, I'm assuming, teach other teachers how to be culturally responsive in their training. We also are, when I was at corporate, when we were in financial strife, the first thing we did was no more travel. Yet we spent a lot of money on China, this last month was Arizona, Chicago. The next thing we cut, of course, was conferences, and we're still spending money on conferences. And I just, oh, and then the consulting was quite elaborately spent, too. So I look at what we're spending our money on, and I look at our research and what our community wanted last, what, in 2014, we said we wanted to keep music. That was one of the things that we really wanted. And I look at all the schools around us, Wilmington requires fifth-grade music instruments. Yeah, I know, I have to add. So I'm really passionate about this, as you can tell. So I'm really hoping that you take the study off and we continue with our fifth-grade music and think about extending it to maybe kids who may not have this opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Pamela Balabushka Ray. Welcome.
Thanks for the new microphones.
Yeah.
I'm very excited.
All you have to do is ask.
Hi, I'm Pamela Balabushka Ray. I'm here to thank Highlands School for sending out a letter informing us that racial name calling, including use of the N-word, is becoming more frequent. We were encouraged to have conversations with our kids about these terms, and we were also assured that Highlands and EPS is working in partnership with us to help students understand why use of these words is harmful. They are following policies based on anti-discrimination laws to protect children. Our schools do not exist in a vacuum. It's necessary and right that our kids' education includes complete information about our history or has been in use in Edina for generations. For generations, this is not new. It's not new anywhere in our country. We should be in partnership with our schools in helping kids understand the history of this word and racial discrimination across the board. It's not a conversation to be had at home alone. Learning opportunities through books, the arts, plays, history classes are all essential in that partnership. Highlands believes that kids have an endless capacity to develop empathy for others. They are fully capable of learning from mistakes. We believe that kids should be shown grace as they learn uncomfortable lessons. We also believe that there are lines that should never be crossed. Racially charged name calling is one of those lines. Our family has been at Highlands for 10 years. Highlands has done an excellent job of having thoughtful and engaging conversations regarding these topics. I appreciate their commitment to continuing to provide opportunities for kids and parents to learn. Our community is better off for it. I am the mother of a black son at Highlands. I know his safety and well-being depends on our schools responsibly handling these issues. I fully support Highlands' response regarding the situation.
That completes the audience presentations. That's all. Those are the only people that have signed up at this point. So next, we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a request to remove anything from the consent agenda? Otherwise, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We are on to reports and discussion. We are going to have a personalized learning presentation. Randy, are you leading that?
Yes.
Excellent. And we have some audience.
There's not enough microphones.
If you can take those off.
Right.
Then we'll switch in and out.
One more?
Okay, Jamie. Sorry.
One more?
I'm just not special, these former students.
I actually have a old kindergarten student here tonight, which is kind of exciting. Vivy's here. Yep, Genevieve is here. She's a little bit taller.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chair Wallen Friedman, Superintendent Schultz, our school board members, our community members, all of you in attendance this evening. We are on part three of this three-part series around personalized learning in the Edina Public Schools, and we're here to talk with you this evening about some of the ways that that is shaping up at the elementary level. And we're, I'm looking for a slide, but it's not popping up.
John, can you forward?
I'd like to introduce a few people. First of all, Randy Smalls, Director of Teaching and Learning at the Edina Public Schools. I'm joined here by Katie Mahoney, our elementary principal from Highlands. And I also have Jamie Hawkinson on my left, who is a fourth-grade teacher at Creek Valley. And standing over to the side, but soon to join us, we have Heather Edom. Heather's going to wave. Who teaches fifth grade at Cornelia Elementary. And Kristi Artinger, who is at Countryside, teaching fourth grade. And Jen Gross, who is also second, sorry. Three, four, sorry, I'll get in the third try. And Jen, who is also at Countryside, teaching fourth grade. And we also have a student this evening, so thank you for being here as well, Gina. So there's no action required on part of the school board this evening. Simply, the purpose is to continue our dialogue around core elements of the strategic plan related to personalizing the learning experience for all of our students. So there are three core elements that we've been talking about the last couple of months that sit at the center of this model, which is really focused on kids. And the first element is about learner profiles. And learner profiles, again, for our community, are just about getting to know our learner better than we ever have. It's about not only knowing the learner, but really, it's about helping the learner get to know themselves. And specifically, it's about their strengths and challenges as a learner, but it's also about their interests and their preferences as a learner. And the more we can uncover those and make those known to the learners, the better they can be leveraged in the classroom by the teachers and by the children. Also, proficiency-based progress, I'll go back maybe one slide. Also, proficiency-based progress is really related to the standards and the competencies that our students are supposed to achieve. And we know that different brains learn at different paces, so pacing is a part of that element. And then the center element, customized learning paths, is how we get children to the place where we want them to be. So if we know what outcomes they have to achieve in school, and we have all this information about who they are as learners, then customized learning paths are about creating pathways that are engaging and motivating and interesting for all of the different students that we have in our classes. We know that when students leave us, we have this profile of the educator of the student, the graduate from Edina. And I want to point out two competencies in particular, because I think they're very relevant for the work that we're talking about this evening. And one of them is a globally competent individual. When kids leave Edina, they're headed into a rapidly changing, diverse, global society. And as part of that, they need to have skills and attributes and behaviors that help them be successful in working with a variety of different kinds of people, from various cultures, races, ethnicities. They need to understand a variety of things about the world, including economics, how the world interacts globally. In addition to that, students are asked more than ever, or will be asked more than ever in their career, to be able to learn, unlearn, and relearn, and it'll be an essential life skill. The rate at which information is going to be generated is going to be amazing. It's going to be so much greater than it is today. And the rate at which technology improves is going to be such a rapid pace that's going to be so essential to be a very effective learner, to be successful in life. And so if the, if the element of the future that is required for the workforce is that it's going to require a learner that is a very excellent advocate of their own learning, has high learning agency, then the question is, what are the implications for the design of the K-12 instructional model? And that's where we believe the personalization framework supports the development of the kinds of skills and attributes that are going to be critical to their success when they leave our public school system. With that intro, I'd like to turn it over to Katie to talk a little bit about some of the organizational work that she is leading and helping our team with in terms of elementary and personalized learning.
Yeah, so what does all that actually mean for teachers and kids on a day-to-day basis? That's kind of what we're trying to actually put into practice across all six sites. And as long as I've been in the district as a teacher and now back as a principal, we've been talking a lot about personalized learning. And so last year, when I came back on board, a group of us were able to get together and think about what are the pockets of success that are happening right now, and how do we build on those successes? So through some work in Milwaukee, and now with the Hume Foundation grant, we are able to think about how strategically we are going to move this across all six sites. So this year, Jamie Hawkinson and I, we've, we've kind of set out a three-year plan. And this year, our goal was to have at least two teachers from every site join a cohort, build, build a platform on SchoolAG, so we could share across all sites what's happening and what we're doing, and how it directly relates to what we call are the three Ps, the profiles, the proficiencies, and the pathways. And so we've done that. We've created our cohort. We have over 15 teachers representing all six sites. And right now, we're in an action research phase, where everyone is taking something on this spring to analyze and dig deep, actually, with kids and get messy so that we can talk and learn from them. And then we'll, we'll move on from there. So next year, we're hoping, we're going to grow it so that we have more teachers and principals on board, so that everyone is learning, and we're going to have some real benchmarks and goals. We, Jamie and I have done a lot of partnering with the middle school coaches as well, because we really feel like they are out in front of us, and we have a lot to learn from how they've moved the work this year, which is really exciting for us. So I, I'm really excited for you to hear what's actually happening, because that's, that's the exciting part for us, is that this is happening. And how do we just make it so that it's the way that we work and the way that we talk? And, yeah.
I think the next slide is you, right?
Yep. So one of the ways in which we are looking into, digging deeper into how students are understanding themselves, is to provide them with opportunity to learn about growth mindset, to teach them the tools and skills to properly reflect upon not only their learning, but also what it is about their learning that they like, what, how is it that their interests are providing more engagement throughout the day? And so they become more involved in the learning process. But in order for us to really know about our students, we, we do have to ask them, what do you know about yourself? And we, as teachers, really pride ourselves on getting to know our students, because the best way for us to inform our instruction is to know our students' likes, interests, what really makes them go every single day, and what, what is really hard for them in their day. And so I brought Gina here to talk a little bit about a couple of different things. She'll first answer a question about her learner profile. So at Creek Valley, as you know, we're a leader in me school, and so we have leadership binders. They're also a place that we house a lot of our data. And so I've asked the kids throughout the year to reflect upon their own learning interests and styles and places. Even though we do not have our new furniture yet at Creek Valley and our, our new spaces, I ditched desks a few years ago, went to tables and a flexible learning space, and I'm not going back for a while. So Gina, how do you feel about your learner profile? What did you learn about yourself from? We do have an extensive one, I know some of you saw that, but it's not as extensive at the kindergarten, first grade level, but how do you feel about, or what did you learn about yourself in your learner profile?
Some things that I learned about myself are like things throughout the day that will help you be a better learner, and things that you didn't notice before that will help you out through the day, and that will just make you a better learner.
What about space?
I like to learn kind of in a table near the back. It helps me learn a little bit better, so I like that space.
Thanks. We'll come back to that a little bit. So one of the greatest things about the learner profile, and after we dig deep, and we allow for reflection, and so their learner profile changes over the course of the year. And so we allow kids to have time to take a look back, and when we talk about conferring, come back to that. But we are thinking about our learner profiles whenever we're informing our instruction. And so as we start to inform our instruction, we start to plan with our students, we start to build our customized learning paths. And so we have Heather, who's going to first talk about her win time over at Cornelia with her fifth-grade team, and how they customize their interests in their paths.
Okay, so I will say win time is definitely a work in progress for us. It's changed. So it started out the beginning of the year where I was just in my own, I was going to say, I didn't think I was on the next slide. There I am. That's okay. I was excited anyway. There we go. It did start out where I was self-contained in my classroom during win, and I would just have a sign-up sheet, and kids could sign up for time slots during win time to work with me on something they knew they needed help with. So it's also being more aware of, like, what did you struggle with today during your math lesson, what do you need more help with? But then the rest of the room, I just felt like those kids were just kind of doing nothing, and I didn't like it. So my team and I met earlier this year, we're like, we've got to do something, and we really want to be more creative and make it more personalized, and meet all the different types of learners we have, and give them a chance to build on what they're learning throughout the day. So during the win time at Cornelia, and I'm assuming it's the same at every building, we've talked, and it is our building, but during win time, that is when our students who need specialized services, who ESL services, Title I teachers, young scholars, they're all pulled for what they need during that time, and then I'm left with a group of like 15 kids in my room, okay? And so what we've decided to do in my building, and it's been working fabulously, we've had so much fun with this, we have several different rooms and options for kids. So one room, right away, we make sure kids understand that your first job is to be a student. So your job is to make sure you understand what's going on in school during the day, you understand the concepts we're trying to teach you, and you're supposed to keep up with your work. If you aren't understanding something that's going on and you know you need more help, we have the work room. So there's one teammate of mine, her room's always the work room. It's a quiet room. They go in there, and the teacher that's in there, and sometimes there's also a parent that comes in and helps out, they can go and talk to her and sign up for time to work with her on the concepts they're really struggling with. So that's the work room. They go in and they work on their homework that they weren't able to do last night for whatever reason. That's the quiet work room. They can get any support or help they need from that teacher. And if that group tends to be really big, we do push another teacher in there to help. That hasn't happened yet. Something happened once. Another room, right now, my room is the tech room, and they're not just playing on computers the whole time, they're not going on to Prodigy and playing Prodigy for 45 minutes. I am teaching them tools that they can use later on to show what they know and what they've learned in class. So we have been doing things like learning how to use a green screen, so they can create, they can recreate things that we've done, like when we read Tuck Everlasting, they recreated a scene from Tuck Everlasting, they acted it out, they got the scenery in the background, it was really cool. They do little bits, where they're doing connections and learning how to make a light go on, or sounds go on, or fans go on. One girl, she made a massager, it was great. She's like, do you want me to test it on you? I went, yes. We're doing all different things. It's on learning how to use technology in education, like how can you use it to show what you learned, what you know? Even simple things that we take for granted, creating hyperlink. I teach them how to do that in that class. So there's a lot, that's the kind of tech I'm talking about, augmented reality, we're doing a lot of. Another room is a bulletin boardroom, which probably sounds really simple and really silly, but you would be surprised how much research goes into that bulletin boardroom. I put some examples up there. This is a main case in our building, so if you come in our first hallway right there, outside our cafeteria, that one says Happy Pie Day. They wrote down a bunch of facts about the number pie, and how it started, and what the numbers are, what it can mean. And then they go through, and there's another one there that says, who's at Cornelia? Each week, they spotlight a different student, they interview them, these skills of interviewing and writing, and writing questions, and then writing up the answers, and then putting it up. These are great skills that they're learning, research, writing, interviewing. So they're doing that, they're creating, which is great for those kids who really like the hands-on. Another one is the Reader Theater Room, which, again, these are changing soon, because we're like, okay, we've done this for a while, but Reader Theater's been the past couple of months where kids are reading stories and then recreating the story. So they read fairy tales, and then they went and recreated them as fractured fairy tales. And then they teamed up with my tech room kids, and had my tech room kids create the background on a green screen, and they did the scripts. So they're writing the scripts, they're acting it out. It was so much fun to see. And then the last thing we do, and right now, pretty much only my class does this, because I started this at the beginning of the year, they can volunteer. So I'm going really fast, I want to give everyone else their time. But we have a fantastic population at Cornelia. It's very, very diverse, and we have a really high special ed population that does not always get to interact with the regular ed kids. So they're usually in their own PE time, their own music time. And so I have kids who will go and if you see on the bottom left picture, they will go and they call it like run club or craft club and they go and they play on the games, they get any materials they need for these games or for these crafts. And actually, there's a mom in here, her son does craft club and they love him. Like he goes and he does these crafts with these kids and it's like the highlight of the DCD kids' day. Like they love playing with the big kids they see throughout the day. So they go and volunteer. Sometimes they go volunteer in like a kindergarten or first grade room and they're reading with kids or they're helping them with their math, which again, is great and it's helping everyone. It's not just helping the little kids, it's helping the older kids who are doing it too. It's just reinforcing the stuff they've learned throughout the day. So that's what we've been doing with win at Cornelia. And it's been, I mean, we've loved it, the kids have loved it. It is definitely not feeling like we're wasting 45 minutes a day. It has been huge for us. So.
Just love the excitement. And I want to backtrack a moment because I got so excited about Heather's win slide that I forgot to tell you a little bit more about what the customized learning path might look like. And so customized learning path is really where we as teachers get to sit down with kids, we get to talk about what we're going to plan and we get to create this path in a different way. So we prep together, we plan together, we organize their ideas and their thinking where we reflect on their voice, you know, different choices and putting at their, their interest levels. And then most importantly, from the teacher's side, we become that guide on the side and we start to reflect with them on their choices and encourage them to always be doing their best in their learning. So a little bit of background of what that might look like. So next we have, is it you? Yes, it's Katie.
I think, so as, as you guys are, just another part of the pathways that we wanted to highlight today is, you know, we've, many of our buildings have had their collaborative learning spaces developed. Creek Valley and Highlands is not quite yet, but we're super excited to have them. So here's just a couple of pictures of what other collaborative learning spaces look like around the district. And then if you go to the next slide, John. No, keep going. So at Highlands, you can kind of see where we started years ago and then the staff decided to take all the computers out and create a maker's space, or we call it the maker's lab. And so that's what it looks like right now and I can't wait to add the third picture next year when it finally happens and have our new collaborative learning space. And so part of the excitement around all of these learning spaces and personalized learning was a grant, a grant through the Ed Fund that happened last year and continues to happen with their support around maker's mindset and maker's space. So that how can teachers combine the standards of science, math, engineering, technology and do some really innovative, cool things with kids that just engage the learners? So Highlands has been really deep in this work with our media center, our media specialist, Kip Dooley, as well as all the other buildings have because of this help from the Ed Fund. So if you keep going, John. So here's just a couple photos of different opportunities that we've done, very similar to what Heather just talked about with her learning path. Ours kind of wrote, kind of comes through the maker's lens. And we just have had different opportunities like Makey Makey and Ozobots and we've had sewing. And if you just keep going, John, I think I have a bunch of pictures here of just kids experiencing different opportunities in the maker's lab. And there's just so much about creativity and learning now that we are just really excited about in elementary. So we wanted to highlight that path. And now we're going to highlight countryside and I think math. So we, as a part of this cohort that Katie and Jamie were talking about this year, John and I got together and along with another coworker who's not here, Kate, and we talked about being at countryside, we have CP and neighborhood classrooms and try to think about a way that we could use personalized learning to tie some of the programs together. So we, we went with language arts. So we're trying a partnership between gifted and talented, fourth grade neighborhood and three, four CP and using state standards and our benchmarks in language arts to try to come up with ways for students to customize their own path for learning. So kind of going with, I don't know if you can click on our pathway down at the bottom.
There you go. I'm magically doing that.
So Randy was talking about earlier about students creating their own path and advocating for themselves. So we decided to start with more of a blank template to help students customize their own learning.
So we also decided we were going to try to do a little mini pilot or action research that we're part of the cohort with Katie and Randy. And we just finished a book club in our class. And so if you go to the other, or the other link on the main page, we talked to our classes about four elements of personalized learning, voice, choice, evidence, and reflection. And I created just with the class, and they needed a little bit of guidance, fourth graders the first time we did it, but the first three options on each power standard about character setting and inferences. And the students helped me create that and then they were allowed choice in their project. And now they're in the middle of showing their evidence and hopefully next week we'll be reflecting. That was.
Do you want to go into your training, depending on what you think they need to be working on a field line?
I think, yes. I mean, just with this being our first time kind of following this, I was just trying to see what happened and my entire class, nobody chose to work with me. They all chose, I was shaking my personal, they chose partner work or independent work, but then as they were kind of all, I was helping and guiding them along, they all of a sudden four or five boys and girls were, they had no idea what to do. So then I said, hey, do you want to work with me? And they're like, yes, yes. Like when they finally came down to it, they realized what they needed. So it was interesting how it just kind of happened naturally.
Well, and building on that, we, another part of it with that blank template to start with, we thought it'd be really fun for her class to come up with what they thought and then my class to come up with what they thought and then show the kids different classrooms what they thought of as they're personalizing their learning to and see if, how many of them tie together or if they're different. So our goal next fall is, as we're doing our action research this spring, but we're going to start with the global read aloud. And so we're, five of us are going to read the book together, do sort of shared learning activities and do this as a shared class experience. And then we have differentiated chapter books for students to pick a book that they're interested in and then to kind of go off and try this personalized learning path on their own. So that's our goal, to tie all of us together next fall.
So continue with language arts. At, one of the ways that they were talking about with their, their pathways, we've looked at how we can embed our curriculum because we have such amazing curriculum that we've started to work with over the past few years that with the Making Meaning Curriculum, we've started to build pathways with units that are a little bit more open to interpretation such as poetry and inferencing with fiction. And so one of the things that we're working on now, and I, this is one of the things I wanted to ask Gina about, is that we have what we call have to's, can do's, and then we have things as choice. So sometimes there are things where we as teachers will say, this is something that we really need you to show us that you can do. Will you tell us a little about what seminar might look like?
Seminar is where the whole class gets together with the teacher and then we just talk about what's going to happen. So if you have any questions, you can ask them and then the whole class can just learn about it and then you can just kind of go off and do your thing.
Might there be a mini lesson involved in that seminar?
Um, yeah.
So say we're talking about making inferences with illustrations and we might have a quick mini lesson, maybe it's five or 10 minutes. If there are students who still want to continue with that, they can stay upfront with the teacher, they can go to their can do list and they can start to work on something else that on their own independently, they can work with a small group, they can choose a space around the room, they can work on something else that they were working on before and then come back to it. And so they kind of, they start to manage their time and they organize. One of the neat things about the pathway that they're working on is that they have to confer with us multiple times. They confer with each other, they have a peer, they have a partner that is a reading partner. And so they sit down with their reading partner, they'll make a plan and how are they going to meet what we're asking them to meet in a specific unit. And so if you scroll down on this one, it will go all the way to some of the standards that are addressed within that unit. And so we talk openly about the learning targets, the I can statements of what is expected, that what are your teachers supposed to be teaching you at this time? And the neat thing about the language arts standards is that most of them are, they're sequential, but say you're doing third, fourth, and fifth, you can extend the learning even though you're teaching a fourth grade standard, much at a higher level or lower level as needed. And so that's, we start to talk about that and then they make a plan with us as we're conferring. And so we sit down and we do goal setting, mini conferences of sorts. What's your favorite part about having that option of choice of how you show what you know with your, when we're making our pathway plan and we're setting out a course on your goals, what's your favorite part about that?
That you don't have to have like a thing where you just have to do what's asked. You can just say like, you don't always have to take the easiest way out, but you can just like make something that shows how you know the standard and it's kind of like your own way of doing it, which is a little bit better to do because you get to show how you get to do it.
So you could demonstrate your learning in many different ways. Could it be an assessment?
Yeah.
So sometimes it could be an assessment. We do have students who choose to take a test versus make a presentation or demonstrate or just orally tell us what they're thinking. So pretty neat. And then we also do pathways with math as well. And one of the reasons that we wanted to show you this pathway to show the neat things that we're, this moves into our proficiency-based learning. You know, how are we measuring what students are knowing if we're allowing them to choose more along their path? We're constantly readdressing the standards, readdressing the objectives and the learning targets throughout the unit and conferencing one-on-one with students or in small groups to really think where are we at and how are we moving forward and how are you progressing? And then one last question for Gina is, when we're tracking in our data binders and our leadership binders, you have the opportunity to share your standards mastery with your family at conferences. Will you talk a little bit about that for us?
So when you're tracking stuff in your binder, it shows the improvements you've made through your first spelling test and throughout it. So it's kind of good for your family to know like if you've made progress, if you need help on a certain thing in spelling or math or anything that you're working on. So they can just know what do you need to work on, how can we do that?
So you're starting to see, these are the standards that I've mastered. So like green, we, we often use the master connect color, so green, yellow, red. This is the one I'm really confident in. This is the one in my assessments that I've mastered multiple times. This is one that's in the yellow, I still need to work on that. And so they're taking that ownership and when we have that choice time, they're able to say, I need to work on this standard, who else wants to work on this with me? And then they'll create their own small groups and maximize their learning in their own space, which is really, really exciting to see. Anything else you want to add? Okay, good job.
I think that's it. Yeah, questions?
Gina, could you tell me what an I can statement is?
A what?
An I can statement.
I can statement is I know how to do this and I can explain to others how to do this and that I can do this on my own, I can do this multiple times with getting the right answer.
Wow, well done. You can do that. Thank you.
I had a quick question. When the middle school came and presented, they talked quite a bit about how the students, it seemed at almost the end of every class period, it was self-assessment and it was very rigorous. And then the students and the teachers would try to figure out, were you using the best time, which might more be a middle school issue, were you self-directed and? Do you do that on a periodic basis? And I was just wondering how that worked on the elementary school level.
Absolutely. Sometimes it's daily, sometimes it's hourly, sometimes it's every 20 minutes. So it really depends on the day or the subject area in which they're working. It is a learning process for students to figure out how to self-manage. And so at, you know, every beginning of the year and throughout, we are taking time to reflect on, have we made the good choices? And that's one of the things that we love about that, whether it's one-on-one conferring or having a small group or me sitting in on a peer conference, listening to them talk about how they learn best or where they learn best or what they enjoyed about an activity. I wish I could say that we do it more often. We do, moving forward, it is always a goal of all of us as teachers to have more time for that specific reflection. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
I want to especially encourage the words I was hearing, Heather, you were saying about how you would reflect upon what's working, what we do, how can we bring in more students. I think that's, that's really the skill set that needs to be happening over this year and next year as this is so new that almost no matter what your brainstorm is, the purpose is to get to that conversation. So I think that's, that's really encouraging to hear. And also just a follow-up question more on differentiation about, about the content too, what's being learned, not just different pathways, but trying to find some, some data around how effective that's being, I don't know what exactly it would look like if you're comparing test scores from students that are in this personalized effort, pilot program to those who aren't, maybe in a different school, or if you're looking at it from students of previous years, trying to find some trend. There's never going to be the perfect type of comparison, but trying to look to it at the academic impact. Because I know we talk a lot about the, the social skills, the soft skills, the essential skills, and that's, that's something that needs to be teased out as well. But of course, these are the same school days that we were dedicating to academic pursuits before and want to make sure that we're doing them justice as well.
Yep. That was something we talked about with the middle school as well is how the teachers at a certain point, sometimes if a student chooses competency in one way over and over is like, all right, you're going to actually have to take an assessment this time. And so I'm sure that's something that you also deal with.
Well, that's one thing at the elementary level is that we still hold most of the control for our students. And so we do see when they are making the good choices very quickly. And so we try to, you know, stop it in its tracks if it's going to, we don't let it go too far. I had a second thought to that. Go ahead, Heather.
I'm surprised at how willing to hear you they are.
Yeah.
So I have several students that would do the same thing over and over if they could. And I would challenge them sometimes. If you have a good relationship with your students, you can say, so I see you've done this every single time. Do you think you could do this? And I'd love to see what you would do if you tried it.
Yep.
I've said that multiple times this year and they actually have. And as far as differentiating, that's also part of when you're having a conversation with them and it's personalized, like their learner profile, here's what you need to learn, here's what you're struggling with.
Sorry, I almost forget it on the thing.
I miss all the wonderful things you're saying.
As far as the learner profile, so for example, the group of kids I have, I have a very low group of math students at this point in time. I had my student teacher sit with them and say, here are the standards that we haven't gotten yet, like we've been working on them all year, you're not passing them. And she did, she redid the learner profile with them but asked even deeper questions like, who's helping you at home? What kind of support do you have at home? What are you doing after school? And do you want us to give you paper and pencil stuff to do? How can we work on this and I'm going to check in with you again next week. Here are the different things that Ms. Edom is prepared for you to work on to get to those standards that you are just not mastering. So there's all different ways of differentiating and then there's all different ways of making sure they're doing something different. You can say, this has not been working and I know you know it hasn't been working, so what can we do differently? So they're actually pretty, like they take constructive criticism pretty well depending on how you put it.
A lot of formative assessment. Lot of formative assessment.
I've got a question. Every movement towards something is a step away from something else. And so we've got a clear pathway here in personalized learning. What are we not going to be doing in the elementary schools that we used to be doing?
I guess I see a lot of less teacher talking already. I see more collaboration, discussion, questioning, more in higher level of inquiry, less paper, pencil, rote learning and more creation as well as, you know, deeper level thinking. Those are some of the things that I've noticed. I mean, I haven't felt like we've taken anything away from the important pieces of our instruction. We've only created this, this deeper and wider level of engagement where we're listening to our students and answering their questions, more so than just feeding them the information.
I'm heartened to hear that you're saying that you still are involved in giving the kids direction because a lot of the kids just can't choose for themselves what they need, especially in the elementary grades.
Yep. We definitely do still have most of the leading in that, in that realm.
Lots of guiding questions.
Lots of guidance.
More working together with that. So knowing that you as a teacher are a partner with the kids, but at the same point, I mean, I know what the standards are that I have to reach and help my students get to that point, so how can we work together to get there?
Less sage on the stage and more guide on the side, as you said.
Yeah, and I, I also think it's less of like everyone's going to have the same poster with the same five things on it. It's just that everyone's going to have to research and study a state or a region and then how they show what they've learned about that state and region is up to them. But they have to meet these criteria based on the proficiency and standards, but I don't need it to be in a poster. Like that's kind of the big difference I see. And the exciting part, I think, for kids, because I think kids get kind of bored with that repetition of what's in my pocket for ideas and what's in a, you know, 10-year-old's pocket for ideas. So that's what's exciting, I think.
To feed off of that, I have an example where I have a student, we were talking about inferences the other day, and I got an email that night from a student, she was like, can you please check what I just shared with you on Google? And she's like, and can I show it to the class tomorrow? And I opened it up and I started laughing because the very first slide said, Bob couldn't ride his bike. And then the next slide said, I bet you thought Bob was a boy, didn't you? And she was like, nope, Bob was a fish, but you inferred that he was a boy. Like she went this whole thing and she was so excited about it and it's such a great way of showing that she understood inferences. And I've never seen that before, but she took total ownership of it and she did it in a totally different way. It was so much fun to do.
And, you know, I just think along the lines about assessment and about achievement. I think we mentioned it here about what, like, have-tos versus want-tos. And I think that there's always going to be have-tos. There's always going to be ways kids have to show us what they know, and kids know that and accept it. Especially when they have choice on other things. It just is, it's a better partnership with the, with the learner. So, I think in elementary school, there's always going to be ways that we still control and have to manage our classrooms so that it's a safe and, you know, it's a safe learning space. But this is just, this is exciting because what ways can we allow kids to have voice, have kids have choice? And I think it's, I think teachers are excited about the opportunity for the partnership.
So, I just had one quick question. So, the conversation's been great. It's kind of revolved around the concept of choice for this entire presentation. So, me, you talked a little bit about standards and making sure those are met. Ellen mentioned a little bit about what do we give up or what do we get? And so, when you think about choice, you don't have to answer this now. You can if you feel ready, there's Mike circulating. But if you had, whenever you shift an approach, whether it's in teaching, or whether it's in business, or any discipline, different resources meet a different approach in a better way. So, what would be the number one resource you would give up today? That's slightly antiquated, doesn't apply to the new approach? And what's the number one resource you wish you had to go deliver on this coordinated approach of personalized learning across the schools? So, again, that's, that's a deep question. You could think about that and come back to that. But I'd love to hear that. We're doing a strategic plan this year. I want to make sure that, we all want to make sure you have the resource you need. But if they're making lots of choices, what would your choice be?
Well, I mean, I'll jump in, and then people can chime in if they have different choice, if they have different ideas. But I know at Highlands, we talk a lot about which resource meets which standard, or which, which learning the best. And we really, as instructors, like to look at our resources that Edina has provided us, and then choose what's going to meet that for a child in the best way. So, it's not saying, it's saying Math &amp; Focus might be, you know, some of that, but there might be some need for something else, reading, you know. So, I think that you hit on a really, really important part, because it has to come back to our Minnesota State standards. And then, the, the teachers' understanding deeply of the resources that they have at their hands in order to meet those in the best way for the kids, and what the kids are showing you what they need. Because again, you might have half the class that is really going to take off with one resource, but another three kids over here really need that repetition that another resource is going to provide. So, again, as the instructor, I hold a lot of that ownership of how that works. Time's up.
I was just going to say, I just said to Kristy over here when you were asking that question, just very quickly, and I know this is not the answer you're looking for. But Jamie and I were in a cohort together, something totally different. But we, when we get together, we get super excited, and then we start bouncing ideas off each other. I'm like, oh, my gosh, we should totally try this. So, honestly, to be quite honest, my top preference, like, if I could choose anything, would be more collaboration time with teachers in other buildings of like grades, where we can bounce ideas off each other. And then, I mean, we've come up with so many great ideas, and we very rarely get the opportunity to see each other. Luckily, as soon as we see each other, we just start obviously doing this right away. But that would actually be my top resource, I think, we have that we don't get to utilize as much as we should.
And kind of building a little bit with that, I would say, like, schedules. Schedules are really what tie us to so many things in the day, and especially when you have specialists or between buildings. And what time you have this, and what time you'd have this can really play into, I mean, I don't know how to fix that problem, but that's a big thing. If you could have a little bit more flexible time during the day, and not be so tied to, we have 45 minutes, and then you have to get to lunch, and then, so.
Just have one kind of a quick question. I'm trying to, to hear about this and see the rollout time. And I understand also that we will be rolling out a new math curriculum. And I'm just wondering if, you know, the pace of all of this is appropriate for implementation?
I was just thinking, today, we were at the math training for Math &amp; Focus. And the entire discussion at our table was, I feel like personalized learning is the delivery of the new curriculum. And so, everything that we were learning, we were trying as a team to try to figure out, how can we personalize this? What can we do to make this resource work for us in the way that we deliver, and want the kids to be part of it? In a way, it's a, it's a really good time to do it, because we're starting fresh on something new. And so, with fresh eyes and a new delivery, I've actually been piloting it for two years. And so, I'm in a fortunate position that I've already had the opportunity to dive into Math &amp; Focus. And so, I have been creating, you know, the pathways and things for different chapters. And then, we get to share it out with the fourth grade teachers coming in for next year. I know we're in a different place with that, but in a way, it's a whole new mindset to do it all at once, but I appreciate you.
Quick question. So...
I'm sorry, could I just add just a little bit to that? So, I'll just kneel over here on the side. We talked a fair amount with the trainers from Math &amp; Focus about our framework prior to them coming out and doing this training that occurred today with all of our elementary staff. And one of the exciting parts of that conversation was the opportunity in which these two things really come together. And they're not, they're not in isolation. If you really dig into the Math &amp; Focus and you look at how it's structured and how it's set up, you will see customized learning paths opportunity with math concepts built right into it. You will see how learner profile applies to the curricular resources and the materials. Because part of what you're trying to dig out with a learner is, who are they as a mathematics learner? And what is about them that we can leverage and continue to grow and extend? And so, what we saw from our conversation with the trainers was this beautiful matrix and fit between the framework we've created as a district and the resources that they're providing. So, I, I don't believe it's an either/or. I believe it is a, 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 a gathering of both of those elements. And they're going to come together in a very effective way.
All right. So, my question is, you've been piling this for a couple of years. Do you have any measurements in place to determine whether using the personalized learning methodology is more successful than the old system? And success might be greater proficiency, it might be greater engagement?
I think the, the one thing that I could talk about to that is that I have, our team over at Creek Valley has chosen Mastery Connect as a standard platform. We did away with any percentages on any of our tests. And instead of tracking how they're doing percentage-wise, or specifically to numbers and operations test, we tied every test question to a standard. And then, as they took their tests, they are third grade through sixth grade. Because there are any given chapter of Math &amp; Focus, we will cover second grade standards up to sixth or seventh grade standards. And so, we will attach that to the test question. And then, on Mastery Connect, they will upload their, their answers. And so, we have that data. I can't say that it's necessarily, you know, showing growth in a different way. But the kids are seeing that their score is not just a percentage, and I think that that is a gift to them. They're seeing, I'm making progress on these standards, I'm turning green. It's giving us the opportunity to dig deeper into what are, what are the holes that they're missing in second, third grade still in those standards that haven't been covered? So that we can go back and say, hey, let's take a look at this again. And then, take a quick formative assessment to check to see if they've had it again. So, that's something that we have been doing this year that's slightly different. I do see more engaged students in my math classes versus just this waiting for them, like, when are we going to do our homework? Homework looks very different. And the, the communication styles and the presentation we do, there is a link to a mastery showcase project of one of my students for other area and perimeter and squares and rectangles units. Whereas, they, they did have to take their final assessment, we're trying to have some, a common assessment. But to enhance their experience of their learning, they got to show what they know in their own way. Going through the standards, making a plan with peers and with myself for their last math unit, and then, they created their presentation, so.
And I'll just add that, sorry, I'm sorry. I'll just add that we are, we track learning and achievement and growth based on MAP and MCA. We have all that data at the school level, at the grade level, teachers have it down to their classroom level. So, we will continue to track achievement and growth data for many years. Those metrics will never go away. And so, we do have the ability to look at how those different metrics are changing. But I think Jamie spoke to some other types of metrics that are really hard to assess, and they're hard to measure. One of the ways that we can collect those perceptions are through our stakeholder surveys, which we do every spring. We have student, staff, and family stakeholder satisfaction surveys. We'll be launching those coming up here in May or the end of April. And there are questions about, I feel challenged as a learner. I'm engaged in my learning. And so, there's an opportunity to keep collecting that data over time and look at the impact that these different elements have on that data.
Are you giving those out to every classroom, the stakeholder surveys?
We send those out to all families. We send those out to all students, and we send those to staff. And there's a little bit of a manipulation on how, on exactly what grade levels those go down to at the elementary level, because it wouldn't be appropriate for a kindergarten student to take an online survey. So, Susan Tennyson can speak to the details of the, the grade level that we go down to. But our intent is to gather perception data from the students, from the staff, and from the families. And then, look at other perception gaps across those metrics.
I think some of the concern, at least from my part, comes from the idea that the, the MCAs and the MAP are such leg indicators. And then, you add in our own leg in interpreting it, and taking action, and deciding that we see a trend that we can act on. It's not just years, it could, it's approach half a decade before we're actually looking at it. And plus, that's a rather top-down type look, and it tends to be a district-level decision at that point. That there, of course, there is the professionalism of individual classroom teachers. But it seems like it's hard to find much in between those two, especially, for better or for worse. You know, we got rid of the, the fall-spring map, and we just took the winter one a couple of years ago, right? So, it's even harder, not only to see those scores, because you have your data points, but to see the trend and to attribute the trend to something. There's just this continual worry that an emphasis on engagement, on satisfaction, is missing the, the academic side. And it's hard, it's hard to get trust from anecdotes that the academic side's there. And there's trust in the professionalism, but you also want, you want everybody to be trusting some data, too, that we're all looking at. So, that's where, that's my history behind some of those questions. I don't know if that's some of the other history, too, but that's just where some of that's coming from.
I will say, I know more about where my students are in math than I ever have before, because I'm digging deeper into what they know in their standards. And more standards than just the power standards, every standard, and I'm looking at third and fifth and sixth. And it's a very rigorous curriculum, so it's been great.
I was just going to ask earlier, you were explaining how you are looking at the data differently in terms of following those standards. If you could just explain for those of us who aren't teachers and don't totally know exactly where you're going with that. So, say there's five standards for that individual student, can you see of the five, well, this one I could tell is not happening yet. Whereas, if it were just a test, they might show up as 85%, but you don't know why?
Yes.
I'm kind of just want to better, so parents better understand what you're really looking at.
Yes. And the data tracker that we currently have as a district, one of them is the Mastery Connect program. And when we upload all of their, their assessment data, it shows up green, yellow, red. And over time, it's tracking, how are they doing on those specific questions that are aligning to a standard? And so, over time, if they have answered them correctly, then they turn to green, and you want all of your students to have mastered a standard at green. Do we have red and yellow? Absolutely. Those are the ones then we pull out. Might be a small group of, let's look at this standard today, this will be our mini lesson and seminar, might be this one. Most often, we're going to cover it within, you know, the curriculum. But a lot of the times, you know, kids and groups will need that over and over and over. And so, we want to make sure we're not missing that. And this has been a year that I have spent more time in small groups of math, because I have that data at my fingertips.
So, do you feel like that is actually helping you do your job more effectively?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah. And then, just when the student, so say Gina looks at her thing, and she can see that she's hit green, what choices does that allow her then, when she knows she's hit green?
It, it depends on what unit we're on. The neat thing about when they do hit green is that then they can extend that learning. They can do more real-world problem solving. One of the great things with the Math &amp; Focus curriculum is that they have multiple facets of enrichment within the curriculum. We also have access to fifth grade, sixth grade. So, say Gina is mastering something at a sixth grade level of algebra. We can take a small group of students, and we can work on that. We can continue that acceleration of learning.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Where would that acceleration go if you've got the small group, that's cohort, that's doing really well?
Yep.
The next year, would they be put into an accelerated class? Or they, how would that look?
That depends a lot on their MAP scores. Depends on how, what they're, it might just be one standard that they're accelerated on. It might be, if they're accelerated on all of their standards, then that's something that will show over time in their test scores, specifically with their standardized tests. We are looking at a more fluid way of utilizing our accelerated math and language arts teachers so that we can have more fluidity within that. And so, if we're teaching a whole unit on inference, saying fiction and poetry, why not utilize a teacher like Kate Partey, who was going to be here, and utilize that? So, it's not just always the same kids in that same, you know, tier-three pullout advanced class. But instead, we can have a little bit more of that. So, you have students who are at a tier-two level that can experience more of a higher level thinking that they might not have the opportunity for.
And I was going to add on to that, too. We do have, like, my, my gifted and talented teacher, Erica Watson, has been working in Math &amp; Focus resource all year. And so, she's really been developing with Fred at Creek Valley, the, like, projects that kids can do when they have shown proficiency and they need enrichment and continued engagement to go deeper into these concepts. And so, I think, and I know the other GT teachers are thinking about how this looks, too. So, it is about, again, developing the resources and then having platforms, too, where it's not housed in one teacher's file, it's actually shared. So, even if Jamie in fourth grade has a group of kids who are showing some real mastery, she can tap into a GT fourth grade math file and see that project and get that going. So, it's really about how do we utilize each other better for the reteaching, but also for the enhancement piece, too, I feel like.
As kids enter into middle school, they have opportunities for different, you know, in this example, different levels of mathematics, starting in sixth grade. And so, you see quickly that if, if we build as a system that students can move at a faster pace and achieve higher level competencies, then we can't dead-end them at the end of a grade level or at the end of a course. There has to be that design that allows them to continue to accelerate and for that pacing to continue, even when they go into middle school and when they go into high school. Now, you've, you've heard the middle school presentation. Well, the high school staff heard that middle school presentation from Southview, from Valleyview, as part of their staff development today, because those students are coming to them. So, they're going to have to prepare for, how do you, how do you meet the needs of students that are traveling at a different pace as they're achieving their competency? And that, that requires us truly to redesign some of our thinking about course structure. Otherwise, we are, we are putting gates on the pace at which learning can occur, and we're trying to keep that pace consistent or the same for roughly a whole group of students. And we're trying to, we're trying to lift those gates. We're trying to open that up. Because we can't control and don't want to control how fast students are learning and what they're capable of doing. We want to expand that. We want to open up access and create more access for that. So, that needs to occur throughout the system.
And do you think some of the unique things that you shared with us today are able to then, that these kids will be able to just roll into sixth grade and use the language that Gina's been able to share with us? And then, those, those teachers will be able to just run with that, the hope?
I really do think they could, yeah.
I think that's great.
But it does take practice.
It's a gradual release kind of method, right? Like, we're trying to give some experiences for kids so that when they get into the middle school, they have the opportunity, and they're really open to welcoming more opportunity in than the high school from there. So, I feel like we're the first step in the journey, and we just want to make sure that foundation is strong for kids.
Especially with the responsibility, it gets heavy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sweetheart. You did a great job.
Could I ask for a round of applause for our outstanding staff who came here this evening? Thank you so much.
Aren't we on A?
All right. We're on to action items. Can I get a motion? All right. Why don't we wait a minute? All right, can I get a motion to approve the unrequested leave? Matt was moved. Owen, second.
Go ahead. Yes. Unfortunately, at this time, we do not have enough full-time equivalence, equivalency time for two teachers because of the changes with our courses that we have been offering. And so, at this time, I bring forward the two teachers, Julie and Tiffany.
All right. Are there any questions? I believe this is a roll call?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Allenberg? Allenberg? Fox?
Garby? Aye.
Jones? Michelson?
Aye.
Petzloff?
Aye.
Alan Friedman?
Aye. Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve the 2018-19 budget alignment plan? And Margot?
Good evening. Since we did the first report on the budget alignment plan on March 19th, we have, we did receive some feedback. We had the listening session on April 2nd. We had three community members in attendance and two students. And had a question, informational-type question and some feedback that we'll take into consideration long-term, but there is nothing changed based on our feedback received in the proposal to you. I'd like to thank everybody involved in this process. And I believe that with our multi-year planning approach, continuing to look at the 17-18 year, and of course, the focus of this approval is 18-19, but always looking multi-year has, has helped this district. And it'll move us forward to getting back to a 6% fund balance, along with meeting the needs of our students. And if you as a board have additional questions, Dr. Schultz, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Up to, up to this point, so I'd leave it up for your approval.
John, did I understand that there was talk about the, and I'm talking about the studies for next year, that the instructional pairs would be a look across the entire district? Not just focused on the CP programs?
Yeah, so the, as we discussed as leaders, we thought would be best for us to look more broadly and not just pairs in the CP program, but pairs across the, actually, across the K-12, just to ensure that resources being deployed in a way that impacts, impacts students' achievement and student support. And I think that's true also for, we mentioned instrumental music, but really look to see if we are, as was mentioned earlier with the teachers, are the specialists being scheduled in a way that's the most efficient way we can schedule them? If there are other ways to schedule, be more efficient with our scheduling, we look at that. So, that would be what those studies would be. So, they would both be broadened up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the 2018-19 budget alignment plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the Creek Valley Elementary 2018 lighting replacement bid?
So moved.
Margot?
You're up again. Yes. Happy to report, we received very good bids on our, the Creek Valley lighting replacement. This vendor currently is working within the district on construction projects, so they're familiar with what's going on within the district. And so, we, we do recommend them. And it is funded through the long-term facility maintenance funding. It is under budget. Just an additional note on this recommendation and the other one coming forward. It doesn't include soft costs or permits from the city, but, so it's, it's always good to see it come in nicely under budget, because then we have a little bit of room for those other smaller expenditures that go along with the project.
Any questions? All those in favor of approving the Creek Valley Elementary 2018 lighting replacement bid, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the, can I get a motion to approve the elementary instructional-sized staffing guidelines? Along with secondary and special program staffing ratios?
So moved.
Mary?
So, you, there are no changes to the guidelines with the exception of some changes with our intermittent needs programming for special education and range for EL service? And Jeff Jorgensen, Director of Student Support Service, could explain exactly what that program is? And why would we, why we would be requesting a reduction in that ratio?
This is a, this is a construct of very, by a caseload measurement process in terms of just over workload analysis. And the intermittent need students are really a type of student that we're seeing more predominantly within our systems across the United States right now. These are students that, that have needs that are sometimes very low and sometimes very high, and it is unpredictable. Most specifically, students that are struggling with autism spectrum disorder or behavioral and emotional concerns can be highly unpredictable in their educational environment, and sometimes require just a great deal of flexibility and their case managers availability to them throughout the day. And so, it's necessary to keep those caseloads relatively low so that teachers or the case managers are available to those students as they are needed and support in the mainstream environments that's needed as well.
So, is this a decrease, then, in the number of students per FDE?
It is, it is a decrease in the number of students that are attached to specific case managers that service this specific population of students. And again, it's overall reflection of workload and the amount of time that these students do require.
Any other questions?
Yes, I, I had one. I know we haven't talked about this in any depth, but I was wondering if, I think we talked about this, and we had some parents come and express concerns about class sizes, in particular at Highlands. And I'm wondering if in future, just like we break out CP and French immersion, if our two buildings that, that are divided in that regard, in that there are fewer neighborhood program, neighborhood classrooms? So, Highlands only has two neighborhood classrooms for all of the grades first through fifth, and then, I believe, it's only three at Countryside. If we could consider looking at a class size guideline in terms of the non-resident upper limit that might be pulled out separately for those buildings? Because when you get four new kids that move into Creek Valley, they can spread them across four classrooms. But when we get four kids that move into Highlands, and we only have two fifth-grade classrooms, it's a much bigger imposition. So, I'm just wondering if in future, it would help even, help you, Mary, with how you take a look at non-resident upper limits for those buildings?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great suggestion.
One other question I had was, as far as the secondary instructional sizing factors, is there any way to break this out and get more detail into instructional versus non-instructional size parameters? And, and maybe actually get a report on current second, current secondary instructional size? So, we can get an idea of what do our secondary, I feel like we talk so much about primary class size. And I'd really like to get more context and more information as to what's going on in the secondary level. Because we get these averages, but we also know that we have some classes. You could have a band that has 60 kids in it, and then, I just, I can't really get an indication from here to tell me for our core academic classes, how big are those classes? And that's what I would, to me, that would be very informational, if we could break it up by academic, by extracurricular. And then, also see, maybe on an ongoing basis, some sort of reporting that says, when are we going over the mark?
So, we do the actual first report, which does give a breakdown on academics and the secondary department-wise. And so, we could sure look at doing it more frequently throughout the course of the year. If that would be more helpful to, especially with the classes, I'm not sure about the extracurricular. And, and you mean music when you think of that, and theater classes? Or are you thinking something totally different than, than actual courses?
I'm more, well, I, I mean, those are obviously very important. I'm, I want to make sure for our core academic classes that we're meeting the, our instructional size guidelines. So, and I think that, but, sorry. Sorry, no one, no one's able to hear me. And I think it would be, it would be good to be able to see when we're talking about what are our, what are staffing size guidelines? It, it feels a little uncomfortable for me to vote on this number when I don't know what that means, actually, for an academic class, because it doesn't tell me. And so, I would, I would personally like to see that in this document, even though it doesn't have it, and that's fine. But just going to go for a basis. And then, in addition, I think for all of these, I would like to see more frequently reported, where do we have outliers? Just something that the board can look at. When, where do we have outliers? Is there anything we can do about it? Just from an informational perspective, so.
Yeah, so I think at, at the very end, you always have that enrollment, the monthly mobility. But that doesn't tell you much either. That tells you which students are leaving which building or grade, and which students are coming in. And, yeah, we could absolutely, if that's... And, yeah, we could absolutely, if that's requested of the board, provide more information on a more frequent basis on class size.
So I, I think what you're asking for is, so nine through twelve on the math classes, what's the average math class size? What's the average language arts class size, social studies, science, those sort of key core classes?
We've, we've seen a document like that in the past.
Yeah, that's that October first report where we do the class size average. What we don't, so we could, we could do some a little bit more with that. So we, what we don't necessarily have anymore with that is the range. So, you know, for math, we might have, at a high school, I'll pick on the high school, we might have ranges in math classes from twenty-two students up to thirty-six students, with the average being thirty-point-four. So, but yeah, we can absolutely drill down and be much clearer on both middle school and high school courses. You know, the elementary numbers are easier to do, but we absolutely can do that. There's, there's reports at our fingertips all the time. So it's just providing the direction of what you would like to see and how frequently, and, and we can do that. I think for this particular purpose, though, the budget is built on and staffing has been allocated to our secondary schools based on that thirty-point-nine ratio and twenty-seven-point-two. So principals have already received that based on enrollment, and they're starting to distribute sections based on, based on those particular numbers.
And Mary, I think if we did get any type of presentation on that, we'd probably wanna have the principal or maybe counselors as a part of that, just to help us understand that when kids are filling out their schedule and their, their desires need to be met, I imagine that some of those classes, which may end up at a thirty-four and some at a twenty-eight instead of thirty-point-nine, has to do often with accommodating kids' desires to meet all the classes that they wanna meet and make it in the, in order that works for them. So it'd probably be helpful to get some insight from how that whole, I don't even know how they put those schedules together. There's some genius in there doing that, so. But then on a second note, I wanted to follow up on my comment about the, the guidelines, because I would like the board to address that before Mary has to deal with open enrollment next year. So I'd like us to have a discussion and relook at class size guidelines before that, because this affects what Mary has to do then come January, correct, Mary? If I could put that request in.
And Erica, I would suggest that teaching and learning kind of create a little sheet that talks about what specifically you're looking for, because if Mary's saying that the math classes run from an average of twenty-two to thirty-six, then I think if, if that committee kind of defines the question, then we could just take it to the board, approve the question, and then get it to Mary. But I would, I'd recommend kind of detailing it out, and then making sure that in fact it is not a hundred-hour work project.
The changes are the real reason why we're approving.
Well, it should be actionable too, not yet. I think we're still working on what information we're even looking for. But at some point, if we think that we, we don't have such tolerance for class size, say in math, language arts, some of these score courses that's so high, then we need to be more prepared to find a point four FD in the budget to open up another couple of sections of language arts or of math. And suddenly, it becomes part of our, our budget process, and not just a general conversation on class sizes and enrollment, but where are we, where are we putting funding? How are we gonna find that extra coverage? And it really needs to be a conversation that gets backed up into those other processes. So it's, I appreciate the, the formality of it too, and I think it's, it's something that'll hit a couple of different formalities. And it's a good question, an awesome question.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the elementary instructional-sized staffing guidelines, secondary guidelines, and special program staffing ratios, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve policies five-three-three, six-twenty-eight, and seven-oh-two?
So moved.
Second, every time.
Have you, are any changes on these? I think we, didn't we see these?
That's right, we were, we did have some updates on the one that we tabled, there'll be more updates. Well, we don't need to be doing committee work at the table here like this. So then the others, no changes, but I think it's, it's entirely appropriate to ask for more discussion on any of these policies. Open that up for the board.
Any questions?
I do.
All right.
I, a couple of questions about the wellness policy, policy, what was that? Five-oh-three? Five-thirty-three. So it reads in the policy that, that all food and beverage is sold on school grounds to students outside of universal meals are considered competitive foods. Competitive foods include items sold à la carte in the cafeteria from vending machines. Then it says all competitive foods will meet USDA smart snacks in school nutrition standards in any applicable state, and it goes on and on and on. My question is a couple of different things. Do competitive foods include things sold by boosters at athletic games?
Under that definition, no. Federally, I believe, if you look at different sample policies, we can include that. But as part of, I'm not on policy committee, but we also, as a student wellness committee, have reviewed the language. And we did not include the boosters. We will certainly support and encourage overall healthy choices, no matter what is served on our grounds. But specifically, that language does not include them in the competitive food definition.
Okay, so even though it says all food and beverage is sold on, sold on school grounds to students, that would be outside of that perimeter?
That's the way that, as I read it, because then we define what the competitive foods are, such as à la carte.
And cafeteria from the vending machines. So then, for example, does the, does the school store count?
Yes, if it's sold during school day.
What if it's sold outside the school day?
School store outside, so the USDA guidelines are from midnight till thirty minutes after the school day. It must be compliant with smart snack guidelines.
Okay. So like the hive up at the middle school? That has to be compliant with this policy?
Yes.
And is this, I guess, I'm trying to understand where this policy is coming from.
So there's new requirements federally that we are to have overall what I would call strict strengthening and stricter guidelines over what is served on our, on our district property to our students. If you, you read the samples, it's even, you know, at any time of day in terms of healthy options, not just even healthy options, just only healthy options, and not having something that somebody might determine as a less healthy option or choice. And so a student wellness committee has looked at it, and I believe the policy committee as well, we kind of took the approach that we took five, six years ago on the nutrition side of the policy, where we could do, for example, there was a lot of discussion about complete elimination of certain types of items, because that's the direction locally, state, federally, where we wanted to go. But instead of completely eliminating language, we tried to find an appropriate balance about how do we educate students about healthy choices for them? And also have nutrition, we wanna have nutritious meals. And so as we were reviewing the policy, we also took the samples, which are very strict. I mean, if, if there's language in some of the samples, that there will be, even the foods brought by parents and put in their own children's snack bag must be smart snack guidelines. That, that's how far some of the recommendations go. And at least I'll speak for the student wellness committee, we didn't feel like that. We want an appropriate balance on the overall wellness side of things and nutrition side of things, but something that would fit in our district. And so we didn't include, for example, in that example, that all parents must follow smart snack guidelines, because there's some parental choice there. But in, in terms of that paragraph, would you like me to look at it for some other specific organizations? I'm happy to look at it and review it one more time.
Well, for me personally, I feel it seems a little over-prescriptive with things like the school store. I can see it, I can see us wanting to have seventy percent of the snacks in there be smart snacks. I'm a little sensitive to the messaging to students that the only good snack are things that are like smart snacks, and taking away the message that children should be involved in choosing snacks, and that it's okay to have things in moderation. And when we have, I mean, if you've ever worked in the hive, we have kids that go to the hive, get a snack, and then go and like workout for five hours. And I, I think it's a bit of a tricky line that we walk there when you're telling a student athlete or something that it's not okay to have a cookie, when we have students that are very sensitive about their body images and stuff like that. And I, it just seems a little overly strict to me, like that we can't sell chewing gum, and we can't sell mints, and we can't, I, I, it, it just bothers me from, from that perspective when I think once kids get to high school and once they're in later junior high, that we need to give them a little bit of, let them have a little accountability for what they choose to purchase and put in their body.
Certainly, I think educational choice, that's part of the education process, to make healthy choices. And I may choose that cookie today, but I also know I'm gonna work out or what, I can't choose to have ten every single day, or whatever the case may be. We, it is so federally directed, we don't have choice between midnight and thirty minutes after the school day. It's not our choice.
You'd have to take it up with the former First Lady.
It just isn't our choice.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to understand, because there's choice in not saying that parents have to bring snacks in. So I don't, I guess I don't understand where we have choice and where we don't have choice.
The smart snack guidelines with what is being served, see, the, the parents bringing it in, it's not being sold. So the smart snack guidelines, if it's not sold, then there's some flexibility there. And we, and there's parental choice. But with what, anything that is sold between midnight and thirty minutes after the school day, we don't have a choice. That is the policy language. After that point in time, so for example, the booster's at a basketball game, which they're a separate entity from us, we can do, we certainly can encourage, we can talk about other groups or even the student groups at thirty minutes after the school day. But anything is sold, if it's a fundraiser, anything that's sold in that period of time, we have to follow the smart snack guidelines.
What are the consequences if we are out of alignment with the federal standards?
We risk losing the federal aid for free and reduced income.
Yeah. It's pretty big.
Are there other questions? All those in favor of approving policies five-three-three, six-twenty-eight, and seven-oh-two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the robotics team trip to Detroit, Michigan?
So moved.
I walked us in.
This looks relatively self-explanatory. I mean, the robotics team did really, really well, qualified for travel to the world championships. Are there any questions? All those in favor of approving the robotics team trip to Detroit, Michigan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the Edina Community Center re-roofing bid?
So moved.
Okay, team, we need to be awake here.
I've moved every motion.
All right, Margot?
Another good bid to report, and it is partial, it's a section of ECC, it's not the whole thing. But, and we have worked with this vendor before, and so I would recommend it for approval.
Any questions? All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the bid for the Edina Community Center's re-roofing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any leadership updates? So we are trying to schedule a work session. There are three school board members that haven't responded yet, I won't call them out, but I would like them to stop and see me after the meeting so that I know their availability for the proposed work sessions on April sixteenth, April thirtieth, and June fourth. Does anybody else have anything for tonight's agenda? Any objection to adjourning? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.